The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, July 12, 2016. I'm getting feedback. It is 6:00 P.M. Please rise.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with praise and thanksgiving on our hearts and in our minds. We thank you for the year that you did provide for us, and we ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you bless this community, this city council, the staff. Just bless them in this new year coming up, Heavenly Father. Give them the wisdom it takes to make the decisions, Heavenly Father, that best serves all of us. And tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, I for one have a heavy heart, and I'm coming to you and asking you to be with those ten sailors. Just be with them tonight, Heavenly Father. Lift them up. Just let them feel your touch. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that there's many prayers out there for them, and we know that you have them in mind, and we just ask you to bless them tonight. Heavenly Father Jesus, we just ask that you be with this council to make the decisions that'll best serve all of us. Be with our community. Let this community, Heavenly Father, look to you and praise and worship you. We thank you. We thank you for so many great things that you've done, the abundance that you have supplied, and we ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you continue, that we might be able to just praise and worship and feast in your glory. We thank you tonight, and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council authority member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to go directly to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening, council members and Mayor O'Brien. My name is Vicki Holt, and I'm the Riverbank Library Branch Manager, and I'd like to tell you about the programs that are coming up this coming month. Storytime has started back this month, and it's on Mondays at 10:30. It will continue until the end of March, and Mayor O'Brien will be coming on the first Monday of the month, so that would be February 1st, right after my storytime, so that would be 11:00. He loves to read to the children. Children are invited to cut paper snowflakes this Wednesday at the library at 3:30. The library is closed for Martin Luther King Jr. holiday on January 18th. On Wednesday, the 20th, we will have a winter bird painting program. All supplies for this is provided by the Friends of the Library. The public is invited, and that's for children. The public is invited to attend an Affordable Care Workshop to learn about covered California health insurance on Thursday, January 21st, from 1:00 to 5:00. It's not, you don't have to stay the whole time. It's a walk-in workshop. The book club is reading The Paris Wife by Paula McLean. The book club meeting is always on the fourth Tuesday of the month, and this month it's on the 26th at 4:00. Starting February 3rd, Vida Tax Volunteers will offer free tax help on Wednesday nights from 4:00 to 8:00. This service will continue until Wednesday, April 6th. Space is limited, so we'll be starting to sign up people on the last week of January, which would be the 25th of January. So to be put on the list, call the library at 869-7008. All programs at the library are free to the public. It is because of the 8th of Ascent dedicated sales tax that we have these free programs available at the library. So please stop by and visit. You're always welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello. I'm David Taylor. I'm a forty-year resident, forty-some-year resident of Riverbank. I'm a product of Riverbank. I'm here to address the city council over an issue with the Sheriff's Department and maybe its own office. I've addressed this, not this city council, but the city council in the past twice, through different times. Nothing has changed. Basically, it's over a harassment issue. I'm homeless. Been homeless for eight, 10 years now. Still not a felon, not going that way, don't ever plan to. Okay? I feel I've been selected to be harassed by a certain officer, don't need the name now. And consequently of all that, I really find it surprising, the Pledge of Allegiance, because my rights, my civil rights, my constitutional rights have been violated over the last 20, 25 years. Nothing has happened about it, so I won't go into that further, but it's really surprising the use of that and what has happened to me in this city under the police protection through the contract with the city council. The homeless, there's not very many of them. Most of them are sick, a couple are dying. I don't think it's too far out of line to help them somehow, besides having their property stolen from them. It's totally not acceptable. I'm not going to accept it, and I will, I am planning on seeking civil litigation because it's got to stop, and that's the only thing people really pay attention to is the dollars. Besides that, I feel the police have stolen, the police have stolen my property illegitimately. I have a trial coming up in February, trespassing. I already have a letter from the DA's office saying they will not pursue it in interest of justice. This is all a bunch of horse crap directed at me, the homeless, and then any other resident in Riverbank if they see fit, and that's all an indiscretionary word by itself. But that's all I want to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll continue with the consent calendar. Item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of December 8th, 2015 City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Weldon Financial Services to assist with the formation of a community facilities district and subsequent annexations to fund services and maintenance associated with new development. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California adopting the Final Riverbank Americans with Disability Act, ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Update and Appendices. Item 3E, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving the reappointment of Joan Stewart and the new appointments of Edward Tobacco and Larry King to the Planning Commission to serve a four-year term expiring December 2019. Do I have anyone wishing to pull the consent, any consent item? I just want to make a comment on item 3E not pulling it. Do you want to pull it?
No. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Carrie Pope, 3237 Riverside Drive. I just wanted to make a comment regarding 3C.
Okay.
I was unaware that this was going to be on the agenda this evening, but I would like to, if it's the council's will, I would like to be involved with the city manager in this regard as it affects the projects that I have going on on the east side, and so if that's okay.
That would be a discussion between you and the city manager, sir.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
On item 3E, I'd just like to say that we had five very intelligent, knowledgeable individuals looking to be appointed as a planning commission, and I really appreciate all five, but these are the three that I am bringing forward, and I'm very pleased of each one that applied and each one that are before you tonight. So at that point, do I have anyone wishing to make a motion or comments on the consent calendar?
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second for the consent calendar as written.
Council authority member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 41, second reading by title only, an adoption of proposed ordinance number 2016-001. The City Council of the City of Riverbank, California amend in the city municipal code by repealing in its entirety Chapter 120, medical marijuana dispensary ban of Title IX of Correction 11, business regulation, and substituting it with a new Chapter 120, ban on medical marijuana dispensary and commercial and outdoor marijuana cultivation. This is the second reading on this. Are there any comments from the public? Is there any comments or questions from the city council? May I have a recommendation or motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the second reading.
I'll second it.
We're making a motion to approve the, and placing into ordinance, item 4.1, the second reading of the marijuana dispensary ban.
Council members, Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 61, city council appointments to intergovernment boards, committees, and city council LRA appointments to internal city committees for the year 2016.
So, Mayor members of the city council, this is really a discussion that is up to you to decide how you'd like to represent the city on external boards and commissions as well as on the city's own boards and commissions, and I'll hand it back over to the mayor to lead the discussion of going through the list. There are also copies of the list available for members of the public if they would like to follow along.
All right. This is a yearly item, and it's not a surprise. Before we go down the list, is there anyone who wants to remove themselves from a board or a committee? Is there anyone who wants to kick somebody else off and take over? Is there anyone who would like to keep everything as is?
I vote for that.
Okay. So I believe we have no changes. Do we have to make a motion?
I will make a motion. Our intergovernment boards and committees remain the same.
I second.
We have a motion to have the intergovernmental boards and committees remaining the same, and we have a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next item is the annual nomination and appointment of the vice mayor. Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez did a superb job, as all of you have done in the past, and thank you for your service as vice mayor, and I'd like to nominate Councilmember Tucker as the vice mayor for 2016. Do you have a public comment? You may do so now.
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment on this? Anyone like to make a motion, besides myself moving?
I'd like to make a motion and we accept Ms. Tucker for vice mayor.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve Councilmember Tucker as vice mayor and a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.3, request to reconsider regulations relating to outdoor watering hours.
Mayor members of the city council, as you know, the city has taken a number of actions to reduce water in an effort to, strong effort to meet the state mandate that has now become a direct order to the city of Riverbank to meet the 32% reduction. As part of that, there were some changes to outdoor watering that were communicated. However, we did not change the allowed hours of outdoor watering, which would remain basically prohibited from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Because of the new restrictions on use of sprinklers, we have gotten some feedback that that's not particularly convenient for people who have porch plants or potted plants that need some watering, and I can understand their frustration on that. Councilmember Campbell in particular has received a number of comments and had asked that this matter be put on the agenda to get feedback from all of you on the hours of watering, one to find out if you're getting the same kind of feedback and an opportunity to see whether or not there'd be an interest in reconsidering the hours that we currently prohibit watering. So again, the city of Riverbank currently prohibits watering from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., making it difficult, if not, making it very difficult for people to do any hand As your city manager, I can see the frustration of that for residents. On the other hand, I also see the need to maintain, make it difficult for people to water during the winter. The regulations for sprinklers change on May 1st, so sprinklers will again be allowed to be used May 1st, but in the meantime, fortunately, we're seeing some rain, cooler temperatures, et cetera, and we are under the state order. That being said, we have presented a review of the hours that are in neighboring cities. As you can see, we are the most restrictive, and if the city council would like to revisit that and discuss the possibilities of changing our hours, we'll certainly get the word out to our community because, again, I can see both sides, the frustration of the residents of not being able to do some hand watering, and yet, on the other hand, we're still struggling to meet the drought restrictions. So this is really one of those things where what are your constituents telling you? What are you hearing on the street? And how can we make it as, how can we respond to the public as you're hearing?
I've had a lot of comments, and when I explained the situation, they seemed to be very acceptance and also supportive of the idea of very restrictive watering. How do you expect me to water my plants? Well, they expect to be watered by the rain, and if you have plants on the porch as you're waiting for the hot water to come on, put it in a container, go out there and water it. There's no restrictions on hand watering from the tap that you're waiting, that is no longer potable. So they seem to accept it universally. I have not had anyone walk away upset about it, once they're explained. I would say, let's reconsider because we're doing such a great job in accomplishing that 32% reduction, but we have not. We're at a 20% increase for the net last month, which is going to be, which is unacceptable. So if we're going to make it easier to use more water, yet we're so far behind, it seems like we're not taking it as seriously as the state is. Now granted, we, the citizens of Riverbank started saving water from 2011 on, and they, the state arbitrarily took the year 2013 because of the reduction that most cities have done. Can we meet it? We can. We could meet it a lot easier if people don't water their lawns in the rain or water their lawns when they're not supposed to. We're going to be getting an inch of rain over the next nine days. If you have plants on the porch and you can put them outside, put them outside. If that's, I mean, we are in a very serious, we're under a microscope. Anything we do that does not support the state's 32% reduction can bring a fine on us. I mean, easily. We're already in that window, so I cannot see making it easier. For those who are at home, watering before 9:00 in the morning should be fine. I believe a lot of it could be dealt with the elderly that are at home. They can, they can water. It's those that are away from home having the water after 9:00. Again, if they have tubs of water that they're saving from their shower or whatever, they can still water their plants using a pitcher, my opinion. And when you explain it that way, oh, okay, I can do that. We're not getting the word out in a manner that tells the complete story, I don't believe. I don't know how the others, I know Councilmember Campbell, you've had discussions. What is the conversation and how was it handled?
Every point that you made, I agree with, but I consider, I had several people email me, talk to me personally over the past, since we made the decision with the water change, about concerns about safety because we've got a very chilly, cold winter. This is going to continue through some research I did right through February, and it gets dark at 5:00. Now, I agree with the mayor. People ought to be putting out their pots, their buckets of water, catch the water to water, especially if it's raining. Some will, some won't. But the biggest reason that I brought this to the council was because, one, several constituents mentioned it, two, they asked me to, and two, I see this not as an issue about watering totally, but an issue of safety because of the darkness and the chilly weather that we're having now, and from the research I've done, will continue through February. And we are actually longer than any of the cities in Stanislaus County with our time going all the way to 9:00. And the only thing that I would ask you to consider is if we reduced it back to some time that gave them a little bit more daylight hour, you know, if, because there will be people that will try to get out there, water their, maybe elderly or somewhat, or have forgotten to do something, and I would hate to see them get hurt because of the lack of some, a little bit of daylight at some time to water it. That doesn't exist in our evenings at all right now. So that's where my point of view is and why the main reason I brought it, because a lot of people were concerned about that issue. So I will lay it before the council to make a decision.
Well, I think that we can consider changing our hours, but the conversations that I've had is with the elderly trying to hand water, there's concerns that they're just not able to do that. So I'm, you know, my response has been, well, so far with the weather, we haven't had to do any kind of watering at all. So, and then I think people, the public doesn't understand that if we don't do something, that the state can fine us $500 per day, and we just don't have those kind of funds just to throw away, so we have to do something, so.
And that's $500 a day minimum. They can go up, what, some of them are getting fined $10,000 a day?
I've had the same thing happen to me. I've had people, oh my gosh, what are they doing? What are you guys doing down there at City Hall, telling us we can't water and this kind of stuff? And exactly when I sit in and explain to them that if we don't do something, we will have dire consequences, and they kind of changed their tune. I got grilled at Christmas time, my family, and I'm like, why do you need to water anyway? I'm not watering. I have two trees in the back, a lime, lemon tree and orange tree, and they were gifts, and they're planted in pots, and I haven't had to water them. In fact, they're even under the eaves, so they don't get all the rain that, you know, the other plants around in my backyard get, and they're doing just fine. I seriously have not had to water them since we turned off our sprinklers. So I guess I just kind of rely on what I'm doing at my house and thinking that we can do that, and if they've had things they need to water, they just should move them out to where they get the maximum amount of rain. We have a lot of rain coming to us these days, and my grass is still saturated when you walk on it. Things are still really wet, so if we can take advantage. I would hate to send the message that we are going backwards in our reduction of water. I think that's kind of a slippery slope to be already changing what we've put in place. I do think that we are, as I heard earlier, under a microscope, and I think we need to do even more than we're doing now. What that means, I don't know, it could be a bunch of different things, but I think we need to not go backwards in this process. I think we need to continue and move forward and even maybe look at a few more things.
I agree with all the comments made, and I would just add that I'm concerned a little bit about additional confusion out there in the public by changing the hours yet once again, or changing the particular restrictions that we're imposing yet once again. I think that the public, you know, some of them are the ones that attend these meetings or the ones that read the paper or read the newsletter and the bill, they're going to know what we're, what's, you know, what the latest restrictions and rules are, but there's a, there's a good many of them out there that aren't reading anything and are having trouble keeping up with what city is doing what and what the restrictions are as opposed to the, you know, some people are still in the two-day-a-week watering mentality. They don't realize that anything has changed. So I would hate to see us cause additional confusion by changing the scheme yet once again.
And if we did change it, what will we change it to? Let's see. It's dark out there at 5:05, it's sunset. At the end of this month, it'll be 5:20. So if we do it at 7:00 at night, we're still out there in the dark, and I've been in the dark a lot in my life, and I just don't see, you know, trying to change it to keep other people in the dark. I agree with Councilmember Tucker, soon to be vice mayor, that yes, we don't want to keep putting it out there and changing the times, but, and I understand where you're coming from. I've had those same conversations.
And just to clarify, I, when I presented this, because I was asked to by several people, it was not with the intent, because references were made, that I was, that we were trying to change the watering schedule. That's not true. I know that we need to meet that watering criteria. I know it's important, but again, my emphasis on this is safety when people try to get out there, and even if we did go to 7:00, like some cities have gone, you will have a little bit longer twilight, especially as the year goes by, to help them out. Will it stop anything? I don't know, but I just wanted to emphasize, that's my real emphasis on this, is the safety factor, not trying to use more water. And they can use the water anytime they want during any of those times, and I don't think it has a real big bearing on it, because I don't think too many people are going to be out there between 7:00 and 9:00 watering at this time of year anyway. But just wanted to clarify that, that I look at this more as a safety issue than anything.
I can also see where all the confusion is. 9 to 9, 12 to 7, 9 to 7, 12 to 6, 10 to 7, 10 to 7, we have a repeat there, that's the majority, 8 to 7, and 1 to 6:00 P.M. You know, there's a disparity between all the cities within the Stanislaus County. I think it would behoove the Board of Supervisors to say, no, okay, we're all in dire straits. We'd like to have watering curtailed for farms on these days, cities in these days, these are the hours of watering. these are the hours of, of watering. That way it would be consistent, because you could be driving down the road and you could hear a series watering program, oh yeah, I can do that, when actually it's quite different if you're in the city of Turlock, which is right down the road. So again, I'd like to have it remain the same until such time as we change it for the month of May. I've asked all of those who have had comments, please bring your comments to when we develop the new program in March, starting in May. And they're saying, we'll be there. So we can look forward to a robust conversation then.
I can live with that, and thank you for listening to consideration to some of the people that were out there, and I appreciate you guys putting the input into it. Thank you very much.
We still have to make a motion, or not, we don't?
Unless there's formal action that the council wants to do.
Okay, all right.
And Mayor and Council, what I can do is that, that next year when we do this is to revise the hours as well. And so we can do it one time in Fall. There was, there was, kind of, there was a discussion on this, conceivable sides, and so we can take this, this feedback and, and we will remember it next year as well. So, thank you for that.
All right, item 7.1, staff comments.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm happy new year to all of you. I'd like to start out staff comments this evening with Maricela Garcia. Should probably start out with Michael, because he'll be up next with the watering thing, so start with that, so.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Just wanted to take this opportunity to invite our members of the public, and you as well, to our next Budget Advisory Committee meeting, which is tomorrow afternoon at 6:00 p.m. That will be here at our City Council chambers. I also wanted to provide you with an update regarding the Del Rio Theater property. The building currently is under a purchase and sales agreement. There is a due diligence period that was requested by the potential buyer of 30 days. They have requested an additional 15 days to that, so that would take it out towards, to the end of the month, and then we hope to, to close escrow soon thereafter, if everything goes well. To date, there doesn't seem to be any reason not to believe that the gentleman will not be moving forward with the purchase of the building. He's come in to request additional information from the city and has requested the, the potential of meeting again with the city manager and planning staff to discuss some of his ideas. So we, we look forward to meeting with him and hopefully moving towards closing escrow on the property in February. Thank you.
Can I make a comment on that? Not to put any undue influence, but that property has been out of tax roll, off the tax roll since 2006?
That's correct.
That's 10 years, and that we neither need to get it onto the tax roll again, or at least functional building. So whatever we can do within reason to assist this buyer, as long as it suits the city, that we try to make accommodations. Thank you.
I'd like to bring Michael, I'm Riddell, our Public Works Superintendent, up with an update on the water situation in regards to December, the December numbers.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. So I'm gonna, I, I kind of expounded a little bit this go-around, instead of just telling you what our per capita per day use was and what our increase was and that kind of stuff. So, and I think I'll probably do this from this point four, because it kind of lays it out a little bit better for you. So I'm going to throw some numbers at you. So basically, in the month of December, the city produced 62 million gallons of water. Of those 62 million, 56 million gallons of that was used by the residents, okay, which left about 6.2 million that was used commercially and industrially, which is about 10% of what we produce. That equates to the 78 gallons per person per day for the November numbers. So, or for the December numbers, I'm sorry. In 2013, we produced 48 million gallons, of which 44 were used by the residents, which equated to the 61 gallons per person per day. And that's where we, our reduction number is. So as you can see, these numbers are fairly low. I mean, we're, we're down there. However, for whatever reason, in December of 2013, they only used 61 gallons per day per person. It could have been weather-related, it could have been cold, it could have been any number of things. We don't know. And as the mayor pointed out, that arbitrary grab of 2013 is what we're faced with. So when we're looking at that. And one of the things that I did too, is I took a look at the whole year in 2013, and on average, our residents used 141 gallons per person per day. In 2015, we used 118 gallons per person per day. So you can see there is a reduction there, and there's been an ongoing reduction. Our problem is that 32%. One of the things that I, I put on the diocese for you was the copy of our consent order. I also have it in the back for the public to take a look at, and I have been using that, as the mayor said, as a tool. Anytime I have a conversation with a resident, if it concerns a violation, or if it concerns questions about why we're doing it and what we're doing, and I have actually handed it out to people so they could see it. So they can see that it is in fact an enforcement action, and we don't have the choice. We either deal with what's in front of us, or we face the fines. And those fines that we could face, that $500 a day, can go all the way back to June 1. So if you do the math, that's quite a bit of money. And I explained to the residents too, that if we do in fact get fined, it's the rate payer that's going to support that fine. So we're trying to prevent that in any way, shape, or form we can. And as the mayor pointed out too, and most of you have pointed out, when you have that conversation with people, it usually turns it around. Not always, but usually. There are those small percentage. However, we, through the month of December, we ran a total education campaign. We did not issue a single violation in the month of December. Every time we came upon somebody that wasn't following the rules, they were given a violation that was voided, and they were also handed out the newsletter, and they were also handed the schedule, and our water conservation coordinator usually had a discussion with them about what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish. So we did not start violating or issuing violations until January 4th. Between January 4th and today, we've issued 28 citations, and every one of them for using sprinklers or watering on days when they're not scheduled, or watering when it's raining. So as you can see, we're still working at it. So if you take a look at the totality of this, and how we're going about it, I do believe we'll get there. It's just that we're going to have to get the residents' attentions, and what you've done up to this point, I think, has done that. So I really believe we're on the right track. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The numbers seem to be cyclic. Every other month, we seem to be at more than we used in 2013. It seems to be every other month.
Yeah, there is that pattern, yep.
August, October, December. So that, to me, is, there's an anomaly somewhere. We're using strictly 10% of the water being used for industry. A lot of the industries don't change. So if in June, we get a lot of them 10,000 or X amount of water, they use that same amount almost throughout the entire year. But because we reduce it, we reduce their total capacity. That's by the state. I know we're starting the, the metering process.
Yes, sir.
The sooner we can get the metering completed, the easier it will be to have a handle on the numbers, and we can convince the state. We may be having a leak somewhere that we don't know about, that is causing us to have higher numbers than we've had in the past.
And that is a discussion the state has had with us when they were going over the consent order. And basically, one of the, the issues with that is, is that the only way we find a leak is, is either we find it or it's reported to us. And then obviously, we, we repair it as quickly as we possibly can. With the new system, we will have leak detection. We will have leak detection not only at the home, but on all of our mains. So we will know when we have a leak. Then we will be able to quantify that amount, because if you can quantify that amount, then obviously the state will let you take it off the top end, because you've had X amount of gallons that you knew were lost for whatever reason, but were repaired in that period of time. As it is now, it's really, you know, I guess, if we, if we have a large enough leak, we could quantify that, but when you have the old steel mains and stuff we still have downtown and that kind of stuff, I think once we get that leak detection system in, we're going to find out, unfortunately, just how bad a shape we're in.
I have a question about the new development. Do we know how the new development is going to or will affect our numbers?
Well, obviously, that will increase, but the, the state will let you offset for any type of, of new development, or in other words, new users, so you can offset that when you, when you look at that end. But at this point, we haven't had any to really affect us. But yes, we can offset it.
Also too, new development is subject to using the latest water conservation measures, and in fact, that might be an area we need to even look at beefing up even more so for new development that's coming, coming our way. But we do have, we do have requirements in place at the current time.
On a positive note, I'd like to report to you all that the Snyder Energy Efficiency Project at the wastewater treatment plant is complete and is as operating as advertised.
They acknowledged Snyder that worked through sort of a, some technology issues, and they were very honorable partners in, in doing this project, and so I want to give them kudos. We can highly recommend them. Hit a few snags, some challenges we didn't anticipate. They were, they were, they were very, they were, the best word is, is they were very honorable in maintaining their agreement.
They stood behind everything that they, that they stated, with no argument, no fight whatsoever. It was very nice to deal with somebody of that caliber on that size of project and not have the normal fights that you normally have, so to speak.
Thank you, sir.